I would like to remind everyone, and that includes myself. So please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off of our work session. And also, please be advised our city council meeting will broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T Radio, and the City of Gaston YouTube. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Council Ivan Nelson for the call.
Councilwoman Toles.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Back.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is out of business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invitation. Please stand and remain standing for the pleasure of the leaders.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for the freedom to assemble here today. God, we pray that everything we do will bring glory to you. And as we enter the Easter season, God, we're just so thankful for the sacrifice you made, sending your Son, Jesus, for us. We certainly didn't deserve that and don't deserve the freedom we have today. But we know by your mercy and grace, you provide that. I ask for your wisdom for our council today and the decisions they'll be making. God, I continue to pray for the mayor and his administration, that you'll give him wisdom. God, we just pray everything we do today will bring glory to you, and we'll give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We do not have the EMA. They're not coming today, so we will move on with our agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Finance Committee meeting on March the 9th and the Public Safety Committee meeting, work session, and City Council meeting that was held March the 16th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of account for the week of March the 12th through the 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations? We have none. Unfinished business. There's no council action that will be necessary regarding the resolution on 2441 Fairview Road in District 7. The nuisance has already been abated by the owner. Our next item, this is a time and place as advertised, to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1606 Harlem Avenue in District 1. The state of Alabama possible right of redemption to the estate of Lily Mae Johnson, Marcel, and Annie Pearl Johnson, and the heirs of Lily Mae Johnson, Parcell, as follow. Eddie Marcel, Thelma Harris, Annie Gaston Johnson, Johnny Johnson, and Floralel Johnson being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? If you'll come to the mic, if you'll come to the mic and give your name and address, please.
Good morning.
Councilman Williams.
Is it home?
And there's a picture of the...
Ah, yes. I'm Johnny Johnson, and I'm at 1314 River Street, East Gaston, Alabama. And the property is my mom's that was deceased, and my father was deceased. It was left to us, the kids. And I have been keeping the property up, you know, the maintenance up on the property. But the house is like, it's deteriorating, and I'm finna get ready to move a double-wide trailer on that property. The house has got to be torn down.
So what are, are you all going to tear it down?
Ah, yes. Most of my family members are deceased, so it's just me and my oldest sister.
So I guess I'm asking, are, is it your plans? And when did you plan on tearing it down?
Ah, sometime this year, like probably in the summertime.
Or would you like for us to tear it down, and you just make payments right here?
Ah, yes, if, if it's, you know, reasonable.
Well, just, Mr. Johnson, just so you know, what'll happen is, if you don't tear it down, and we pass this abatement today, then at any point in the future, it can be torn down by the city, and they're just gonna apply whatever the actual cost to tear it down was, you know, depending on how big the house is and how much debris had to get pulled off. They'll calculate how much it actually costs to demolish the house, and then you'll owe that to the city as a lien on the property, meaning you couldn't get a new building permit there, or you couldn't sell the house to somebody else without settling that up. So that's, that's the way it works. And then you would have to approach the city and make some sort of arrangements to get that, that paid off, to get that lien taken off the property.
Where do I need to find out more information, like, I could have it tore down myself?
It may not be that expensive, but just know that if you don't tear it down, and we pass this today, the city's gonna come tear it down, and then you would be responsible for whatever that cost is. I just want you to understand what's happening here.
Mr. Harbison would be the person that you need to talk to at this time. But since it's in my district, and I can tell you before you sit down that I'm going to abate it, but if you all tear it down before the city gets to it, that's, you know, that's fine, you're still in the clear. But we need to go ahead and abate this property, which means that if you don't tear it down, we'll tear it down.
Do you understand what?
Yeah, I understand. Okay, well, let's, let's do it that way then.
Have you already been through the steps about trying to get a trailer put on that property?
Well, I had to fill out an application for, you know, you have to go through a process to fill out an application and all that good stuff. So I'm just getting, getting everything in progress.
Okay, okay.
Talk to him afterwards, Mr. Harbison there. He may be able to let you know a little something, okay?
All right.
About the price, give you estimate, maybe.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, I am Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in November of 2019. There've been no improvements, so there are no permits to improve. We would actually prefer that Mr. Johnson demolish the house himself. I'll be glad to put him in touch with a dumpster company to put it out there. But unfortunately, we, we're not gonna be able to wait till summer. This case has been going on over two years, and so we're gonna have to have some, some progress made rather quickly. I'll talk to him after the council meeting and let him know some of the costs that'll be incurred, and give him some recommendations there. Today, we're asking for a resolution. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Obviously, this is not my district, but, but something I'd like, I've said before, and I think it bears repeating. Mr. Harbison, in just about all of these cases, does a great deal of coaching. He, he, if you, if you reach out to him, and in many, many cases, he'll reach out to you, but if you reach out to him, he'll walk you through your options. And he can make them a whole lot plainer and understandable than typically we can. But, you know, what I would encourage anybody in your situation is just have a conversation with him, schedule some time, really anybody in his department, and they do a lot of coaching at this point. And they'll, they'll walk you through the, the steps of what your, your options are. Okay? So again, if any part of this was confusing, or if you missed it, just please see him, and I think he can help.
Yeah. Well, Mr. Johnson, you do know that the house, according to Mr. Harbison, has not been lived in in, in quite a while. And so according to the pictures, the, the house is totally and completely dilapidated. So I understand that you are in agreement with tearing it down, but it's just that we can't give you any time on tearing it down since you said summer. So what I'm going to do is to record, to abate the nuisance, and then, you know, you can have a conversation with Mr. Harbison after our council meeting. So I move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And I'd also like to add, most of the time, and I think most of the councilmen up here would agree, that most of the time when we agree to give you 30 days or give you so many days to do it, it ends up back up here because it was not done. So it's, it's really, you know, we try to be good about it, but I was told last week by a constituent that if some of you all passed by some of these houses, you can get out yourself and go tear them down. That's just how bad some of them are. So we just want you to know that it's, it's not about us trying to, it's just, we have, it's an eyesore in the community, and we're just trying to help to rectify that.
Can I, can I add to that, Madam President? Most people think when we condemn a house and tear it down, we own the property. We do not own the property. We don't want to own the property. All we do is, the city put a lien on it for whatever it costs to tear that property down and the tonnage to take it to the landfill. So, so when you do sell that property, we could try to recoup some of our money, and most of the time, we don't recoup it. So I just want people to know, because I know a lot of people have been saying, well, we taking people property, but we do not own the property, or we don't want to own it anyway. So, thank you.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 310 North 32nd Street in District 6. And this is Heleney and Nichols and Sharon Gates are being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in February of 2020. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
As y'all can see, this is in District 6. As y'all can see, the, the structure's not sound. Mr. Harbison passed a picture by where the structure's not sound on one corner right there. At one time, that was a nice looking house at one time.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution authorizing annulment of a portion of an unnamed alley that's located off of Dunkin Court in District 7. And as requested by the adjacent property owners, all utility companies have been notified and are allowed by state law to maintain any utility facilities located in the alley. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor? If you'll give your name and address, please.
Yes, ma'am. My name's Chris Montanari. I live at 215 Brenly. I'm one of the petitioners. I own approximately eight or nine acres, the alley's in. And I just found out about the alley when I was trying to build a building and realized that there's an alley on my property. That's, that's why we're, that's why I'm here, and all my neighbors have agreed to it.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all's time.
Okay.
Quick question. Is it my understanding that when we do that, annulment of alley, it splits the land evenly amongst the neighboring landholders?
Oh, which is similar.
Yeah. So just to clarify, guys, this happens sometimes. A lot of old downtown communities have alleyways that run in between the, the two houses. And so what we'll do is annul that and just give the property to the property owners right down the middle of the street. If you live on this side, you get half. If you live on that side, you get the other half, so.
I own, I own both, both sides.
Sure. I just mean for, for principle.
That means you'll get two halves.
Yeah. You'll get two equal halves.
Thank you. I don't wanna give you half my garage.
What is the motion?
We don't have one yet.
Okay. We've had discussion. Do I have a motion to adopt it?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Two seconds.
John.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next resolution is authorizing a co-sponsorship agreement with the Gaston Airport Authority, and this is an agreement required by the FAA, which specifies the role of the city and the airport authority regarding the airport, and to comply with existing and future grants. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business?
Madam President, I have one. This comes from the Engineering Department. It's a, a resolution authorizing an agreement with JBWNT Incorporated. This is to provide construction, engineering, and inspection services required to grout, fill, abandon sanitary sewer mains, and stabilize the subgrade to facilitate an expansion at Prince Metal Stamping, and this is in the amount of $15,000. Ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one. It's a resolution opposing Senate Bill 247. I'd like to ask for consideration today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Madam President, before I make a motion for adoption, I'd like to read the resolution in its entirety. Whereas Senate Bill 247 is a piece of local legislation in the Alabama House of Representatives that proposes a local constitutional amendment to phase out occupational, occupational license fees for cities in Etowah County, and whereas the Gaston City Council wishes to express their concern and opposition to the members of the Etowah County delegation to Alabama House, to the Alabama House of Representatives, and whereas the City of Gaston is one of five municipalities in Etowah County who collect occupational taxes, and we respectfully, respectfully oppose this bill. The effects of such a measure would be detrimental for our city for years and decades to come. We also take issue with the manner in which this bill has been introduced, and whereas like the four other municipalities in the county with an occupational license fee, Gaston's OLF tax rate is set at 2%, and those revenues make up a significant portion of our budget. City Finance Director Lisa Rossa said the city collected $15.8 million in OLF during fiscal year 2020, which constitutes 29% of our general fund budget. The bill would reduce the OLF by a tenth of a percent every year for 20 years, but for Gaston, that still comes out to an additional loss of more than $750,000 each year. And whereas together with our sales tax revenues, the OLF is critical to maintaining the day-to-day operations of the city. Without this funding, there will be a necessary cutback in services along with a reduction in workforce, which would contribute to a rise in unemployment. With the loss of such a major portion of our operating budget, each expenditure would have to be reexamined. And whereas despite decades-long shifts in population, Gaston remains the economic and cultural hub of Etowah County, and city contributions benefit residents from throughout the area. The City of Gaston supports its vibrant downtown with funding to get to Downtown Gaston, Inc., the Gaston Museum of Arts, and the Mary G. Harden Center for Cultural Arts. The Gaston Public Library is also a valuable resource for residents. And whereas Nakalua Falls Park is an amenity enjoyed by residents and tourists alike, as is Morana Park, the city's flagship park that recently underwent a substantial renovation. The venue at Couso Landing, a city facility available to host events, Twin Bridge's golf course, Couso Landing and its fishing tournaments, Forest Cemetery, all fill important roles in local life, and whereas the city provides substantial funding to entities aimed at improving the business environment in Etowah County, including Gaston-Etowah Industrial Development Authority and the Gaston Commercial Development Authority, as well as the Gaston Airport Authority and the Northeast Alabama Regional Airport. And whereas the previous items are not a complete list, but they still make up more than $6 million in yearly spending that doesn't include a multimillion-dollar investment in a community sports complex at Gaston State Community College, or millions spent annually on infrastructure improvements. And whereas such a drastic cut would also, also affect the city's future financial prospects in addition to the added strain of meeting existing financial obligations, Finance Director Rossa reports. The loss of revenue would cause a probable downgrade in our bond rating, which could cause a multitude of complications. Though the city has been fiscally responsible and is currently in strong financial shape, probable bond rating trouble has been one factor that has led to the, to the municipal bankruptcy in other places around the state. And whereas we also strongly disagree with how this legislation has been presented by its sponsor, Senator Andrew Jones. Contrary to usual procedure and courtesies, and courtesy before the introduction of local legislation, Senator Jones did not discuss this issue with Mayor Guyton, members of the Gaston City Council, or some of the other mayors in the county whose cities would be affected. Members of the state legislature should work with municipal officials in their districts on matters of local importance, but that has not happened in this case. And whereas Senator Gast, and whereas Gaston is dealing with the loss of Goodyear, who was our largest industrial employer, Senator Jones wants to cut more from the city's budget, pointing out that this will only lead to layoffs or cuts in service, or both, is not a scare, it's not a scare tactic, it's being realistic. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the, of the City of Gaston, Alabama, that this bill would have decades of negative impact on Etowah County, and the City of Gaston respectfully opposes it. And of course, it reads, "We the undersigned hereby certify that the above and foregoing was duly adopted by the City Council of Gaston, Alabama, at an open public meeting held today." Entertain a motion to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is there any other new business? If not, we'll go to Department Reports, Citizen Request. Mrs. Emma Clapp here today, a family success. Talk about coming, upcoming events and food drive.
Hi, my name is Emma Hazelwood Clapp. I work at the Family Success Center. I'm the executive director over there. I brought with me today Victoria Smith, who's one of our JSU interns, who is working really hard on this proposal that we're gonna, well, it's not only proposal, but some information we want to give to you about this. Recently, we sat down and talked to some students who were with the Chamber Student Leadership, the Etowah Leadership Group, and they sat down and talked to us about problems that kids today face. And one of the problems that we figured out upon talking to them was that there are a lot of high school kids who are going hungry, but it's not really addressed. Now, we've got some really great programs here in town, and we know that we do, like the Etowah Baptist Mission Center, the Gaston, the Catholic Center of Concern, lots of great churches. And a lot of schools are being sponsored by backpack programs through churches as well, so we're thankful for that. But a lot of the high school students, according to these kids, were being missed. And when we started talking to them about it, we figured, what can we do about it? Part of the Family Success Center's mission is to strengthen families, and what we like to do is go out in our community and find out what is a need that we can possibly meet. We know that we can't meet every need, but this was something that we thought we could actually do. So I had Victoria here go through and do a lot of research, and we've been doing a lot of research about it, about Etowah County. Of course, we know that child hunger is rampant across the U.S. We know that it's also an issue here in Alabama. One in seven kids go hungry. 32% of children are living in poverty in Etowah County, according to the 2019 statistics. That means about 25 to 26% are dealing with not having enough nutrition. And the population that oftentimes gets missed is teenagers. We get to hear a lot about parents who give up their food so their kids can eat, but we're not talking about the teenagers who will give up their meals to their parents and to their younger siblings to make sure that they're fed. And it happens a lot. It happens a lot here at Etowah County. So we decided to start a food bank. What else can we do? Start a food bank. So we went to Gaston City High School, because it's our biggest high school, and figured out, how can we help these kids? What are our barriers? After lots of conversations, we found out that one of our biggest barriers is that teenagers have, it's not, it's an embarrassment of people knowing that they're hungry. They don't have a discreet way to get food. They're not gonna ask for help. They don't want to get bullied. All of these things happen, and a lot of the kids that we spoke to spoke to that happening, how they don't want their peers to know their situation at home. So speaking to Gaston City High School, we found out that we can find four or five locations within the high school that teenagers can have access to food, that they could just go and pick up discreetly. Nobody will ever know. They can bring it home on the evenings and on the weekends, not only for themselves, but for their families as well. So we've been out there hunting food. We're making our first donation tomorrow to Gaston City High School around 10 o'clock in the morning, and we're bringing a lot. And we are looking for any assistance from the community about getting food into our office so we can bring it to them. Now, our ultimate goal is to hit every school. We want to go across the county, middle schools, elementary schools, but we're starting with the big one first. After speaking to the principal and the teachers and the different groups, this is a big need that Gaston City has, and I just can't imagine our kids going hungry. And the idea of a 16-year-old giving up his meal so his parents and his children, his younger siblings can eat is just heartbreaking for us. So we've collected a lot of food, but we still need more. So we need easy-to-open pop-top cans, things that are easy to make, in order to give these to these kids, they can bring it home, that are shelf-stable. We don't want things that are expired. We don't want things that they can't make. We need good quality items. So anybody can make a donation to the center for food, and we'll deliver it, we'll hand-deliver it, and make sure it gets in the right people's hands. So that was the first thing we wanted to bring up. We are tackling this right here in our city first, because we feel like this is one of our biggest needs. Now, we're gonna eventually move out, but Gaston City is our biggest school. So we gave you some information here about what we are looking for, food-wise, some data on the next page, so you can feel free to share this with your constituents and how to get information to them so they can come and possibly help us out. Thankfully, we've gotten a lot of work. We did a food drive in November for Thanksgiving, and we gave out 300 bags of food. That was a full meal for Thanksgiving, including turkeys. So we were very lucky in order to be able to do that. We're hoping to get the same outcome this time around. So having said that, we have our actual fundraiser that's coming up on May 1st, and y'all were great to sponsor last year, so we're hoping that will happen again this year because it, without that kind of sponsorship, we can't do what we do. We see 30,000 unique individuals in Etowah County. We see over 12,000 children, between 10 and 12,000 children, and teach them about child abuse. We offer free financial stability coaching. We offer free counseling. We have 12 programs in our office that we have to keep our doors open, and this, these fundraisers are how we keep these doors open. So I just wanted to give you the information. So I just wanted to give you the information about that as well, so you had it, just in case you were wondering what you guys could do to help, but spreading the word about not only our fundraiser, but also getting food into these children's hands is really important to us, and Victoria has worked really hard to make this happen. She's helped spearhead this as a student. So we just wanted to come and talk to y'all about it and say thank you very much for letting us take up your time. Y'all have any questions?
Thank you, Emma.
It's pretty straightforward, right? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, this time we have remarks by the council and mayor. Start with you, Councilman Wilson. Start on the front row.
Couple of clarifications. I know there was some concern around the FAA agreement that we signed. Y'all know, last week I asked that we not consider that immediately so we could have time to review it, but I just want to clarify, the reason I support that is because if we all share the common goal of improving that airport, we've got to have the federal funding to do it. And although maybe the language was uniquely worded, it didn't actually do anything else but ensure that we would be able to continue to receive this money from the FAA and partner with the airport authority. So that's the reason I supported that. The O L F resolution, I know this, you know, a lot of people have very strong opinions about this, but again, I think that it's a misdirection. I think it's a political move that simply relocates money out of the city's coffers and into other entities. And I think it's been tried for a long time in this state. There's been lots of examples of Montgomery trying to come and take some resources and reposition them. But the bottom line is, the selling point for me and the reason I support the opposition to that O L F resolution is exactly what was said in the letter about the bond rating issue. I mean, city have credit ratings just like individuals do. And if your paycheck gets cut in half and you go to the bank to try to borrow some money, they're not gonna let you borrow near as much money as they would if you had a full paycheck. So when you look at what this means, over 20 years for us as a city, it goes down incrementally until it goes to zero in 20 years. Well, it's $15.8 million a year. So do that on a progressive scale for 20 years. That's over $100 million that's being taken out of this community. And if you don't think that the people who decide whether or not we can get funding to do projects are gonna look at that, you're wrong. That's all they're gonna look at. They're gonna go, wait a minute, you guys are guaranteed to have $100 million less money over the next 20 years? Yeah, we're not gonna let you refinance that bond. We're not gonna let you do those water and sewer projects. We're not gonna let you do those economic development projects on the riverfront. So I think that the O L F tax is something that needs to be addressed. We need to have a long-term solution for it. But again, in my research, in places where something, legislation like this is passed, they're simply taking it away from the city and giving it to somebody else. If I thought for one second that this would result in lower taxes for everybody in this county, I'd be the first one out there supporting it, and I hope you guys, I hope I've proven that. But I just don't agree with it, and so that's the reason I supported the resolution. And to be clear, I know there's a lot of people, anytime we bring up something for immediate consideration, it raises a red flag. And I agree that we utilize that way too much around here. I think most of it, like in the case of the O L F resolution, is actually needed. We have a vote that's pending in the legislature. It's important that we get that message to the legislature before the House of Representatives votes on a bill. But I agree with the criticism that we utilize immediate consideration in this chamber way too often. But in this case, I support the use of it for the O L F. As far as the process in general of how we go about considering things, again, like another one that we considered today was based on an expansion project for a business. It got brought up, it got raised as an issue. It was apparent that we needed to address it right now, and so that's why we brought those up. But I agree with those that have concerns about how we utilize that function of government. That's all I have, Madam President.
Councilman Beck.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to make an announcement that tomorrow night at 5:00 at the First Baptist Church Family Life Center, I'm gonna be having an Edenwood neighborhood meeting. There are some specific issues in Edenwood that occurred over the weekend, and we're gonna be discussing that. Numerous people from our police department will be there, along with Brian Harbison from the building department. So it's not necessarily a district-wide, District 4 meeting, it's specifically for Edenwood. I wouldn't say that you aren't allowed to attend because it's an open meeting, but we're gonna be discussing issues specifically related to the Edenwood neighborhood. And Ms. Clapp, I want to just thank you for what you and you're doing for helping with food insecurity at the high school and in the city. For years, I've been involved in similar-type programs and efforts, and it's a real problem. There's a group that I'm involved with that provides backpack, weekend program backpack at Stripland. There's 125 students every year for the last five years that have received those backpacks. That number is predicated upon the school system identifying and families signing off that they will accept those programs, I mean, those backpacks. And so there is a problem with food insecurity, so thank you for what you're doing. And I'm proud to be a table sponsor at your event and would like to get with you. In fact, I took out my phone while you were talking, I wasn't texting, I was writing myself a note because I will forget if I don't do that. So I'm gonna call you this afternoon. I hope you're available, and I have some ideas of some, you know, there's one thing I've learned, being in, helping in Gadsden, I served on the Community Development Board for eight years, which distributes, you know, the 1.2 million annually. There are so many good programs in Etowah County that also results in some duplication sometimes of efforts, and then the money that is there maybe doesn't go quite as far. I'm not saying that's what's happening now, I'm just saying, there's, sitting in that chair for eight years, you get to see the whole field, so I can see where I can connect and network. And so I'm excited to get to speak with you.
You're in office all afternoon.
Wonderful, wonderful, great. But thank you all. That is, talk about changing lives, one belly at a time, that is so important. You know, children can't learn on an empty stomach, and it is embarrassing, and they don't want their peers to know. It's just, it's a challenge, and I thank you for helping to meet that challenge. Earlier in our pre-council meeting, I put our engineer Heath Williamson kind of on the spot, asking about the Prince Metal program that we brought up today. Councilman Wilson talked about it just a little bit. Those things happen almost, I won't say every week, but happens every month, easy, probably every other week. And what that is, is that you plan and you budget and you forecast, but then there's always unexpected challenges. And this is gonna be, this is a $15,000 engineering, but the actual work is probably gonna be in the $100,000 range, and that's not necessarily in the budget. But it's gonna be handled, it's gonna be absorbed, it's not necessarily a problem. It does become a problem when you remove the 2% occupational tax. That's just one of the many dangers of when, if that were to become a reality, because you can't plan for a pipe to burst. You don't know when that's gonna happen. We didn't know there were two large pipes underneath the ground where Prince needs to expand, and we're very proud of them and very glad to be working in partnership with Prince Metal Stamping. So sure, we're gonna do what we're supposed to do, and we're gonna help them, but it's your tax dollars that is helping do that. So you have to be really cautious when you want to do something like that, and you gotta think it all the way through. And I just don't think that this was thought all the way through. Just a real quick history, the occupational tax was created for Gadsden in 1952, 1%. In 1964, they added another 1%, where it's at the present day, 2%. I think at that time, the city leaders chose to do that as opposed to maybe raising property taxes, because if you look at our property taxes, we're amongst the lowest in the state. We are the highest at 2% in the state for occupational tax. Other cities have 2%, but so do we. But it represents 29% of our budget. You have to understand, or I have to try to understand, we need about $50 to $55 million to run the city of Gadsden. And if you start taking away $750 a year and it comes to $15.8 million, it's almost a third of your income, it becomes untenable. You can't run the city. Look at it this way, $52 million, take off a lot of those zeros and get it down to a $52,000 household. All of, any of you out here might be bringing home $52,000. And then I'm gonna take away about $15 or $16 million, you're gonna have $36,000 or $37,000 now to operate your household. Well, how do you overcome that? How do you overcome going from $52,000 a year at your house to $36,000 a year? What are you gonna have to do? This isn't a scare tactic, you're gonna have to cut. You're gonna have to cut your expenses of a large amount, and that's what the city would be faced in doing if that were to happen. So that's just something to consider. The other thing Councilman Wilson brought up was the bonds and the interest rates. Right now, we have a fairly favorable rating in the bond market. That can change with this, and then that, our rating is not good. What that means is, the interest rate goes up. Now, our debt service goes up. Now, we have even less money to spend in the city. So those are just, and that's not an inclusive list, but those are just the things that kind of jump off the page when I think about, what is the city gonna do with that much less money? And I realize $750,000 a year, but that adds up, y'all, in two years, that's $1.5 million every year. And then so forth, you just have to start doing that math. It is not an easy situation to put yourself in if you're gonna be trying to operate this city. So those are some of the things that I believe that I'm thinking about, and I'm sure others have similar opinions, but just wanted to offer that as an example of, I think, of what the danger is of doing away with that. So just a quick reminder, Edenwood meeting tomorrow night, 5:00, the Family Life Center. I didn't give the address. It's at the corner of Sixth Street and Walnut Street, and so look forward to seeing all of my Edenwood friends there. Thank you.
Councilman Williams.
I won't belabor the point, I will, however, just kind of go back to a moment a few years back when I was...
I'm sorry. I won't belabor the point, but I will go back to a moment, maybe a few years ago, when I was, you know, seizing one of the opportunities, one of the many opportunities that I would take, to sit at the feet of Bob Echols when he served on this council. And, you know, we would talk about it a lot, but I did get an opportunity to talk to him some about the thought process behind the occupational tax. And, you know, one of the big contentions that he would always make is that, you know, we have seen due to flight, due to motivations that have driven people to move out of the city, whatever those may be, we've seen our population decrease over the years from roughly a little bit north of 50,000 people to right around 36,000. But we're still the hub of the county. We're still at the center of the county. And so the responsibility to maintain the infrastructure and to manage the traffic and the activity that goes on still lies on the city. And so we would never be successful in getting the surrounding counties or surrounding municipalities to write us a check to manage those, those infrastructure costs and the maintenance costs. There's no way that that could happen. And so one of the things that you have to do is that you have to come up with creative ways to be able to manage those expenses. And I, you know, I said this in a finance committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I'll say it again, you know, if you juxtapose our financial situation in 2005 versus where we are right now, I mean, it is unbelievable, the financial turnaround that we've made, and to put ourselves in a very sound financial position as a city. And so, you know, us being sound financially allows us to allow for some assurances for our employees and for the constituents that we support. Again, I respect everybody's position on this. I don't expect, you know, a person that is having to watch that 2% be deducted from their check to be necessarily okay with it. But I do think I have a responsibility as an elected official to get you to understand why I think it's important, and why I think, you know, we have a responsibility to support sound fiscal management. We've been able to weather quite a few financial crises here over the last few years, not the least of which is this pandemic, and we've been able to do it fairly successfully because we had ample cash reserves to manage through some of these things. Now, thank goodness, we've been propped up by some cash infusions from D.C., but those cash infusions alone wouldn't be enough, considering what we faced. So I just want people to understand, when we take this position, it's not that we're ignoring what we hear about people being opposed to the occupational tax, it's just that we kind of see it from a different perspective. And while we're respecting your perspective, I just ask that you respect ours as well, because we obviously see the financial impact. And so, again, I really appreciate this council, I appreciate all the councils that I've worked with, because by and large, we have been fiscally responsible, and I do not want to miss, you know, I'm gonna repeat it for the third time, I'm not gonna, I don't want to miss Councilman Wilson's point regarding bond ratings. If you look around this city and look at anything of substance, it was probably done through the leveraging of debt. Right now, we have the loss of our largest employer staring us in the face, and believe it or not, this prospect of an occupational tax loss is harmful. You know, they're probably gonna be a lot of people to step up and want to sign up for elective office at some point in the future. And honestly, if this thing passes, if our bond rating gets reduced, I mean, we're afraid, you know, to a large degree, we're just trying to avoid any scenarios that require us to go to market, because you just never know how these things can impact you. I would not want to be one of those people stepping into elective office under those circumstances, not having the ability to manage your expenses, not having the ability to raise revenue. You know, they stacked the deck against us locally because, you know, the way we're structured as a state, there's no home rule. So you have to, you know, anything of significance has to go through Montgomery. And we know our needs, we know our issues here. Montgomery typically doesn't, and as we've seen here for a number of years, they don't ask. So again, it's just something for us to consider, and I really didn't mean to say that much about it, but I think, you know, both Councilman Beck and Councilman Wilson made some very good points. Our prayers go to the folks of Boulder, Colorado. You really don't want to, I mean, you know, that dredges up a lot of emotion, but our prayers and condolences go to the families and the people of that city. It's a horrible event. Also want to offer up condolences to former council member Bill Stewart. We got some terrible news regarding his son. We're praying for you and your family, Bill, and, you know, we ask that you let us know where we can support and where we can be helpful. And the last thing for me is I'll provide an update on my father. Thank you to, he's home now, and thank you to those who have, who've been praying for him. I haven't really made, you know, I think, I'm also thankful to those who've respected the privacy of the situation. We haven't really talked a lot about that publicly, but again, thanks for all the prayers, the well wishes. He's home. I actually stopped to get him a hamburger on the way home, and the way he devoured that hamburger let me know that he was feeling much better as we were on our way home. that hamburger let me know that he was feeling much better as we were on our way home. So again, thank you so much for the thoughts, prayers, well wishes, and we'll continue to fight. Thank you, Madam President.
Mayor Guy.
Yes, I want to follow up a little bit on what Derek's saying. The normal procedure in Montgomery is the governing body asks the people in Montgomery to pass laws and bills for us. Senator Jones is a legend in his own mind, and I know I'm being critical, and I don't care, he'll find out about it anyway, but it doesn't bother me, but, you know, when you don't have police, you don't have fire, you don't have all the things around here that we subsidize, a school and several things, then where are you going to be? So, you know, he just, he doesn't bother to consult us or tell us anything. He just goes down and drops bills in. And there's a few people that's pulling his strings, and I've got a good idea who some of them are, but he's clueless. That's it, and he doesn't care. So you just, next time election comes around, you just need to be sure you're going to vote for, because what they going to do to you? Put you out of business? So that's all I got to say.
Councilman Wierle.
Nothing, Madam President. I'm not going to say anything right now.
Councilman Cannon.
I'd just like to say that, Derek, I hope your dad gets feeling a lot better. He's a good guy, and I always tell him, he looks a lot younger than you. Every time I see him, I always tell him that. I think the world of him, and our condolences go with Bill Stewart and his family in this time of a loss. The occupational tax that we're trying to save here, a lot of people sugarcoat and say, oh, it won't hurt the city. Well, you can take it to the bank. Anytime somebody loses money, like the city of Gadsden, you're going to have to pay it back some way. You either have to pay in more garbage fees, you're going to have to start paying for your brush to be picked up on the side of the road. There's just all kinds of things you'll have to pay, and it's probably going to cost you more once you do all that than it would be just leave occupational tax like it is. With occupational tax, we pay salaries, we do a tremendous amount of stuff, and all the employees, the city of Gadsden, as everybody complained when COVID hit, we laid people off and we had to do stuff. If we take this occupational tax away in about the second or third year, you won't see hardly anybody getting to work. Your response time on policemen will probably, you know, will probably have to do away with cut some off police officers and some firemen, public works employees, park employees, secretaries. That's just going to, it's just, it's going to make your city go down. It's not going to help your city when we do away with this tax. You might bring a little bit home on your check, but it's going to cost you in the long run. And I've paid occupational tax for 40 something years. I complained a lot about it, but now since I know where it's going to and what we do with it, I'll never complain again because I want to see this city strive and prosper. And you take that kind of money away from this city, it won't. I mean, it just, it will have to go down, and you people that's on the council or the mayor, whoever's here, you cannot get that money back once it's gone. You know, I don't care if you bring another business in, you look at all the money you're going to lose in 20 years, every year, $750,000, and that's hard to come up with. I just think it's a political thing. To me, it's like we're going to want everybody to get this bill passed and vote, and it's the same time the legislators and everybody's running. And that just kind of, it's right in that timeframe, and that's a good thing for somebody to run on that says they're going to save you money and give you money, but they're not going to tell you in the back end, it's going to cost you a lot more, and you're going to do without services that you have. So I just think it's a bad move, and that man that's trying to do this, I've seen him twice. The first time I seen him was a Christmas lighting ceremony I hear at the, me and Ben and Miss Iva was out there with our, my wife and Ben's wife. He came up, running up to us and telling us who he was, and wanted to see the mayor, and took off. Another time, I've seen him here in this audience about the rendering plan. I don't think he stayed the whole time, but that's the only times I've seen the guy. Hadn't talked to the guy. I know what he looks like, but, you know, you need to come to us and tell us what your plans are before you try anything like this. And talk to us and ask us how it hurt our city, you know, and everybody around us. This is a big thing here, guys. This is going to hurt a lot of people. We could have layoffs when this thing goes through, the new councilor here, the new mayor, if there's one. It's a big deal, just, you know, because you might get $8 or $10 in 20 years on your check. It's not worth that. Trust me, it's not worth that. I just hope and pray that this, what we're doing today will get a message out, and we can stop this and even go into a vote. Thank you.
Councilman Reed.
Yeah, Madam President, I think the occupational tax in the past has come up, what, frankly, three or four times, went to the Supreme Court, it was ruled on, which shows me that when it comes right down to it, John, you're right, Mayor, and all of us, the senator's trying to make a little name for himself, which is fine. I don't care. I think he's digging himself a hole, and then he can deal with the dirt once he digs it. I think that's exactly where he's going with it. I want to revisit in just a minute, and I'm going to be short, about litter. It's picking back up again, I think because of the COVID situation, that people are out and just enjoying it now. It was tied up pretty well for a while, but I'm getting a lot of calls about the Gadsden Times. I don't know where y'all have noticed it or not, but they put this paper that nobody wants, and they throw it out in your driveway, and you run it over three or four times, it ends up out in the street. I'm talking about the mountain Alabama City. You people can deal with it wherever you are. But I would, I would have been asked to tell the Times, please, keep it. That's a secret to it, because if you don't throw it out there, we ain't got to worry about it being littered. The next with Lisa Osborne is doing a great job. I was going home the other day up Clayton Boulevard, and there's Lisa out, 35 bags of garbage and trash that she picked up on just that one street. So my kudos go out to Lisa for doing an extremely good job. I do want to touch on the airport. When I came on this council, the airport, you couldn't taxi your aircraft from the hangar out to the runway because of the cracks and everything in the taxiways. Runways were let, had been let go. That was starting out. Fred Singleton came on the scene. We've had electrical upgrades down there, extreme upgrades. We've had taxiways paved, runways paved. The military presence has been a godsend out there, and that comes in with the drops. I believe they're back, Mayor, and everything is good there. And the biggest thing was the I L S system. Now people can be directed in. When I was flying, they stood on the ground and told us, you're five feet above glide pattern or five feet below or whatever. Now they can come right in on the beam, no problem. That's a big asset to this airport. So every time I pick up a newspaper or hear people, there's something wrong with the airport, they don't know what, but they want to see the paperwork and the audits, which are there. But it's always a negative about the airport, and I've never seen anything out there but pluses to the airport that's been done in the last 20 years. I know a lot of things have to be done, now it want to be done. They want UPS in here, they want FedEx in here, and so on and so forth. Well, my thing is this, if you have the expertise and you've been around long enough to help, instead of condemning it, why don't you come out there or get in touch with FedEx and UPS and Goodyear and Cooper and all those people and get them to help us with the airport? I'm just getting tired of seeing all the negativism about it. And I would hope that people would get involved. I see we have one or two applications for the board. That's an improvement, and their resumes look pretty good, but that's a small step. We want a big step, y'all. Get on that newspaper and ask UPS to come in here. That's what we need. All we need FedEx, I repeat. Anyway, that's all I got. Just wanted to tell you that.
Since everybody's been talking about the occupational tax, it's just one word I'd like to put out there, and it's called bankruptcy. And that's what it will lead to. Bankruptcy means financial ruin. Find out what happened to other cities that have bankrupt and see how we would fare. And I'm speaking, I'm going to speak to the city employees, if you're listening. Nobody likes taxes. I don't like taxes. But I was always told that you're going to pay taxes until you die. But, so bankruptcy is what we're trying not to happen. That's what this is all about. We've said all around it, but bankruptcy is financial ruin, and employees of Gadsden, if the city of Gadsden filed bankruptcy, your insurance, your benefits, all of those things are lost. So, you know, it's good to, and I was told when I retired, you either pay on the front end or the back end. And so this is what's going to happen. So bankruptcy, think bankruptcy, because when it comes up to vote, sure, everybody's going to vote for no taxes. But when you bankrupt, and I'm talking to the city employees of Gadsden, you're the one who's going to lose. Not Mr. Jones or anybody else, but it's you that are working that's going to lose. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.